Good evening and welcome to Mashpee Board of Selectmen's meeting, July 26, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North. And thank you all for coming. And we're going to start the evening off with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the five in the nine hundred. You can take other questions if you want. My pleasure. If you have any questions, just ask.
And now I'd like a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Could I have approval of the following, Monday, July 12, 2021, regular session?
I'm moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
David Wiggins. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Public comment. First one up is Mary Wagan.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Mary Wagan. I live at 35 Ashument Road. I came here tonight to see Dr. Ha's presentation on Mashpee's water quality, which is a major concern for our town, as you can see by the crowd here tonight. The town is obviously making steps to address our pollution issues, but it still feels like the town is at the tipping point with respect to our environmental quality. And I encourage the town to take and continue to take bold action to improve and protect our waters, including a careful review of any new development proposals, especially when at the scale that's being proposed right now by Mashpee Commons. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Chairwoman Sherman for sharing with me materials that she received from the Cape Cod Commission regarding the Mashpee Commons redevelopment expansion. So, thank you, Carol, for sending me that. I know you've been eager to see if I've seen them. This weekend, I did finally look at them and read them. I think these materials are important to be posted on the town's website so that everyone can have access to them. I note with concern, after reading these materials, that the Cape Cod Commission seems to have lingering questions as to what level of environmental review and traffic study will be required, even though the proposed expansion for Mashpee Commons is large and significant. I also note with concern that the parameters of the traffic study of Mashpee Commons expansion is inconsistent with the details provided with the planning board. There is gross mismatch of square footage and commercial space and number of residential units. The traffic study is significantly smaller than what has been proposed to the planning boards. And also, it doesn't seem to study as many traffic intersections as past traffic studies have done of different developments that have been actually smaller than the one proposed. On June 20th, we met. I was a major proponent of the town securing consultants to help us with this review. I think it's vitally important, utmost, that we act now to secure these consultants, especially a traffic engineer and an environmental engineer, to keep the interests of the town as a priority with the Cape Cod Commission as the development agreement process plays out. I don't think we should wait to start to interact with the Cape Cod Commission on these matters. I think we should act now. Thank you.
Adrienne Russell-Carden. We're going to limit the speaking to three because we -- three minutes because we have quite a few onboard.
Great. I'll try. Good evening, Arden Russell-Cadren. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. It has become clear that the Chair of the Planning Board has contempt for public comment and community participation. He appears biased in favor of the Mashpee Commons Expansion Project and does not appear to be representing those who elected him and for whom he is responsible for representing. It is because of this behavior and because this expansion project, as proposed, will drastically change the character of Mashpee forever that residents and stakeholders must be involved at every step. We must be educated about the impacts and we must be heard. When will those of us who will endure the impacts of this massive development of projects have an opportunity to speak? I am asking you, the Board of Selectmen, to develop and implement a very robust public communication strategy around this proposal. Please begin to implement best practices, best practice strategies for community engagement, such as holding public forums and workshops that allow for back-and-forth dialogue and for questions to be answered, outreach and presentation to civic groups, resident surveys, use of social media, and the town's media sources, including the website and Channel 18. We must improve the opportunity to have questions answered. The magnitude of the Mashpee Commons Expansion Proposal requires these strategies be put in place to inform and serve our citizens. Using the resources available to you, I am asking the Selectmen and the Town Manager to intercede in this process to right the ship. Thank you.
Audrey Hutz. Good evening.
Good evening. And thank you. I wanted the Planning Board to hear these remarks, but unfortunately, there was no public comment at the Board's last meeting. However, I think they're highly pertinent here also. My comments --
We can hear you.
Okay. My comments come from a 2008 report that studied five Massachusetts town development projects, including Mashpee Commons. It was written for VHS, the consulting firm that Mashpee Commons has hired to propose a traffic study for the expansion plan. These quotes are from a section of the report titled "Smart Growth in Unintelligent Places." Quote, "Mashpee Commons hailed as a successful smart growth project has several limitations. Since Mashpee Commons is located on mainly rural Cape Cod, the existing infrastructure is ill-equipped to meet such dense development demands, mostly related to traffic and wastewater management. In this particular case, the project is under the jurisdiction of 40B, which means that there is no density cap, despite Cape Cod's infrastructure limitations. Because of this, the town of Mashpee is left with daunting problems that are incredibly expensive to fix." The quote continues, "While we often hear planners endorsing density, it is not always the best choice. There need to be structures in place to handle the density and larger populations. As many cities have found, development does not pay for itself. Municipal services usually have to be expanded and new schools may need to be built." That's an end of the quote. This evaluation from 2008 still stands. New urbanism is a nice idea, but Mashpee is the wrong place. Yes, we need housing. Under its existing permit, Mashpee Commons can right now build 96 affordable units and 386 total units. If housing is the goal, why not do this? Mashpee doesn't need a little city as a showcase vanity project to bring in a large profit to the developer."
Thank you. Thank you. Jessie Littledoe. Beard.
Juanina Khan. Board, thank you, Chairwoman, and Board, really, for allowing us this opportunity tonight to offer public comment. I will echo the former speaker's comments that I think it's inexcusable that the Planning Board not allow the taxpayers a voice at those meetings in the form of public comment. I would like to say, too, that I am extremely concerned about this project. We are talking about putting four-story buildings in Mashpee. Four-story buildings from Quinnequisset Road all the way up to the gas station and Stop and Shop. Outrageous. The Cape Cod Hospital isn't even four stories high. This is unacceptable. And I looked at the renderings and it looks like New Bedford. And New Bedford's fine for what New Bedford is, a city. We are not that. And I also want to say that there is a reason that Aboriginal people have a right to hunt, fish, gather, and forage. It is because there is a resource that was put there for us aboriginally. We've been here ab- originally. And if that resource is damaged by neglect of the Planning Board or damaged or allowed to be damaged, I don't think the tribe is going to sit back for that. That has not been our history. We are just not going to lay down and let these waters become further polluted and our resources further destroyed. So, I'm asking everybody here that I voted for and those that I didn't vote for to do the right thing, listen to the people of Mashpee, and make sure that this horrible thing does not happen. And we don't have a situation where tribal citizens have to take so much time to fight against this and the other folks here in the audience as well. Thank you again.
Vernon Popnick Jr., please.
Hi. How are you?
I'm good.
Glad to speak at this time right here. It's about the water quality stuff that we have issues in the town of Mashpee. We have a lot of stuff going on with issues of hunting and fishing. And the problem is, the more we take out of Mashpee, the less that the tribal people have to pick their herbs and stuff. So, it's really hard for a tribal member to find these herbs and stuff when we're just tearing up the property. Everywhere we've been able to pick herbs, there seems to be another development going in. I think we need to take a long issue and look at the areas that we're tearing up. Mashpee Commons was one of the best areas for picking berries and picking wild cranberries, lots of different herbs, but that's all gone there. We have very few left there along the river. This is where you plan to expand. There's box turtle habitat all in there that goes when we build there. There's lots of things there that we should be looking at before we should start building in there again. We really need to look at the water quality and try to fix the stuff that we need to fix first before we even think about doing a big expansion like this. I mean, it's really crucial for our water quality to get right before we can even think about expanding Mashpee anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Vivon. Courtney.
Thank you for letting me speak again. I'm going to make two points, as short as possible. I have listened to the presentation of the Mashpee Commons many times, and they always talk about units. 1,700 are units. I wish people would begin to talk about how many people will be living in these units. Are we talking about 3,000, 4,000 people living in this area? How many people will be working in this area? How many people will be visiting in this area? How many trucks? Okay? We keep talking about units. You're putting a massive amount of people in one area. Just think this time of the year, what it's like. You've got the county fair, you've got people on the Cape. You need to think about the impact on everyone in the community. Second point, right now, the town is facing a lawsuit because of water quality. Because of neglect, I'm not pointing fingers, because everyone is responsible, even the people living in the town. As we move forward, you need to think, are we putting Mashpee in a position for more lawsuits because of environmental impact and other issues? So, there's a big decision that you have to make, but make sure that you protect the town of Mashpee from future lawsuits. Thank you.
Okay. Discussion and approval of the following special event, temporary sign permit application. Andrew, do you have something to say?
Yeah. So, this one's the 5K woodland run on Saturday, October 16, 2021, 10 to 12. Send all the relevant departments. No meaningful difficult conditions.
I told Erin she didn't have to come in. This is just a renewal.
Same thing we've done last several years. I make a motion, we approve the special use permit.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Second.
Oh, hi, Tom.
Hey, Tom.
Very good.
I'll second.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes. Andrew?
Yes.
Very good. Discussion and approval of appointment of the following. Community Preservation Committee Member-at-Large term will expire June 30, 2022. Adrienne Russell-Carden.
Yeah. So, the committee met, CPC met early July and recommended Ms. Cadren for that vacancy.
Does anybody have any questions? No?
I'll make a motion, make the appointment.
Roll call.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
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 Congratulations. Discussion and certification of a hiring process as firefighter EMT Jacob Lewis.
I can inform the Board that all of the policies and procedures were adhered to and the proper forms were submitted by Human Resources.
Okay.
Make a motion, we certify the hiring.
Second.
I'll second that motion.
Yes.
David, yes.
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 Thank you. 6:40. Public hearing, Comcast Cable Television License Renewal Proposal. Pat, are you onboard, too?
Mashpee Board of Selectmen has received a proposal from its current cable television licensee Comcast to renew its existing license. The Board will conduct a public hearing with respect to said license renewal proposal pursuant to general laws, Chapter 166A, Section 6 and 207, and 207 CMR 3.022 on Monday, July 26, 2021, at 6:40 PM in the O'Quaid Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass., 02649. The purpose of said hearing is to hear testimony, receive evidence from the applicant and members of the general public to assist the Board in its assessment of Comcast's qualifications for a provisional license renewal. Residents are attended to, are invited to attend the hearing or email their questions, comments in advance to BOs@mashpeemass.gov.
He's not here. Okay. There's no one here representing Comcast.
Is there any from the public or anybody who wants to speak about it?
Is there anybody here from Comcast? No? We've opened the public hearing.
Any public comment?
Pat on the line?
Pat's on the line.
Good evening.
Pat, there's no one here from Comcast tonight.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair. The whole purpose of this public hearing is to obtain input from the applicant Comcast as well as the general public as to the operations of the cable television system within the town. So, it's interesting that Comcast didn't deem it necessarily appropriate to come in and provide us with any further detail. As we know, we did receive a proposal for renewal together with a proposed agreement from Comcast. My recommendation at this time, Madam Chair, would be that you open the hearing for public comment, for members of the public to weigh in on what they feel be advantages or disadvantages of this particular cable television license. The Board can discuss and deliberate upon them, but it may be appropriate to, at your discretion, continue the hearing for another week or two, just to afford Comcast further opportunity to come in. Barring that, if you choose to proceed nonetheless, the Board could vote whether or not to renew or deny renewal of the provisional license. In light of Comcast, you know, non-appearance here or inability to appear, whatever the case may be, the lack of opportunity to receive input or clarification at any point from Comcast would certainly be a relevant consideration for the Board. But I leave that to the Board to decide how you would wish to proceed. But in any event, public comment from members of the public would be appropriate to see.
Rodney.
Pat, can you hear me?
Yes.
I thought one of the primary purposes also was to receive our extension that the subcommittee working group certainly advocated.
As noted on a prior correspondence, Mr. Manager, the Board will ultimately make a determination on whether to deny or grant provisional license. Under the circumstances, if there is a denial of that provisional license would be appropriate. What happens then is the town would have to request administrative proceeding before the Department of Telecommunications and Cable before it files a determination. We'll be running on the U.S. That's the proceeding within which we request the 120-day extension.
Thank you.
So, what would the Board like to do?
I think it's prudent to continue the public hearing until our next meeting and give the opportunity.
Exactly. And for the public to be able to weigh in.
That's my opinion.
Is that a motion?
We're getting to that point in a minute. Just discussing, what do you think, Tom?
I would agree. I would extend and --
David? Extend.
I would like to extend it and try to get a Comcast representative here. They're not showing up, you know? Doesn't sit well with me.
No.
I make a motion, we extend the public hearing until Monday, August 9 at, do you have any appointments?
6:40?
6:40?
40.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you. 6:50. Public hearing, proposed parking ban on parking permit only on Great Neck Road South in the area of Aquay Bay Boat Ramp.
Mashpee Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on a proposed parking ban for parking by permit only on Great Neck Road South in Mashpee in the area of Aquay Bay Boat Ramp. Said hearing will be held Monday, July 26, 2021, at 6:50 PM in the O'Quaid Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North. Mashpee, Mass. Residents are invited to attend or email their questions, comments in advance to the Board of Selectmen at mashpeemass.gov. So, I think I asked for this. The idea is that, you know, we have the new boat ramp at Aquay Bay and people, you know, which requires a sticker. And you've got a lot of people using the ramp and then parking across the street, both sides of the street, making it difficult for traffic to go by. They're not Mashpee residents because they don't have stickers. So, the suggestion to me of some of the people in the community was that we create a, either a no parking area or sticker requirement for parking across from the ramp from June 15 to October 1st, or September 1st, which is our typical permit sticker season.
So, they're still going to be able to park there?
Well, with a sticker, yeah.
With a sticker.
Yeah. But presumably, I haven't seen that boat ramp fill up very much.
But at least that would still give them the opportunity for, if you're a member of Mashpee, you have those rights, but I don't notice the problem. So, I would be in favor of supporting the Mashpee residents. I mean --
Just for clarification, it would be residential sticker or tribal sticker.
Yeah.
Right.
So, whatever the current process is.
That's what it is.
You don't have to buy a different, you know, if you get a transfer station, you get any sticker, you can park at the ramps. You don't have to buy an additional sticker.
Okay.
Anyway, that's the idea behind this.
I might add to that if I could. I know that there's, during the weekend, there's not a lot of traffic there. During the weekend, there seems to be a, you know, it's, all the parking spaces are taken off, are taken that time, that time diagonally to the street. The problem is that the bike path is right, is almost, it's a continuation, I will say, of the bike path. It's not a designated bike path, but it is for residents of New Seabreeze. Is there anything we can do to highlight that, the marking there and just so that the people that park there make sure they pull off the road, at least leaving something that's safe for the bicyclists to travel?
The signage at Great River Boat Ramp has the sticker requirement and a requirement they pull all the way over the shoulder so that people are not in the road, in the paved roadway. So, if you replicated the signage at Great River, you accomplished Tom's goal of getting people off the pavement so that you don't push the bikes further out into the road.
Yeah. That's my only suggestion, but I'd like that for the parking.
Thank you. David?
I feel as though, you know, the shoulder's pretty wide over there. I've gone by, over this weekend, the lot was full on the boat ramp side. There are a lot of vehicles there. Some of them have trailers, some of them don't. I don't know if there are people that are joining, people with the boats going out, but as long as there's no additional cost associated with folks parking over there that are residents, you know, I would be supportive of it. I think it's a wide enough shoulder where people can park safely off the road. I just hate to see more clearing or anything in the area to supplement.
Oh, no, I'm not suggesting there's any clearing. I think there's plenty of room there.
We would be putting up signs, though.
That's, yeah, that's right.
Just want to make sure.
Any comments from, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just curious, how quick could those signs go up?
I'd have to check with the DPW Director.
Because that would depend on the motion, right?
Yeah. You know, we could do it pending, we could do it effective immediately pending posting of the signs.
That's what I would request.
Do I have any comments from the audience on this matter?
I hear now, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call. David?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
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 And I'll make a motion that we designate the area within 500 feet of the entrance to the Aquay Bay ramp, both sides, resident parking, June through September, June till September.
Entrance and exit.
Entrance and exit. That's two points, so 500 feet either side.
Second.
So, just so I'm clear, are you talking both sides of the road?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I think we're going to have to be specific in terms of exactly the distance that the Board is seeking here.
500 feet from the northern --
Entrance or the exit?
Both. 500 feet in either direction.
Of the entrance or exit?
The entrance or exit. So, 500 feet south, 500 feet north.
That's within our right of way.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Tom?
I'm not sure that I understand the 500, 500 feet from the, if you are talking the, I mean, you're talking down by Ernie Vigilio's house that's within 500 feet. Is that what you mean, to go further that far down?
Yeah.
Towards the --
I mean, it's coming up with a distance so that it can be enforced. You know, if you think it's a better, you know, I don't see people down that way very much, that far out on either end.
Northbound side doesn't really have the same shoulder.
No.
The southbound side has an adequate shoulder, but the north --
Right.
That is correct.
Really doesn't have a shoulder at all.
Yeah.
I think just by posting the sign, we're going to have to, we're going to discourage the usage and hopefully just the problem goes away.
But to Selectmen Wiggins' point, are you saying they can park on both sides?
I'm saying, there's nothing that prohibits them from parking on the eastern side now.
I think there is.
Is there?
Of course, I pass it every day and I can't tell you.
There's no signage.
There's no signage.
There's no parking anywhere on the road. So, I mean, I've never really seen anybody trying to park on the southbound side, only --
Nor have I.
I mean, on the northbound side, only on the southbound side.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's my concern.
All right. So, why don't we just, let me amend it to say it's on the southbound side and with posting that include moving off the shoulder of the road. Effective, immediately pending installation of the signs.
You know, I'm kind of confused because I'm trying to visualize that.
I'll second that motion. Yeah.
Because --
You're going down towards South Cape Beach on the right side.
Won't they just park on the other side?
There's no shoulder. You'd be actually on the edge of the road.
If you tell me I -- If you tell me I can park here and I want to go in, I'm parking on the other side, whether it's, whether it's sticking out or not, I'm just telling you.
Then, all right.
They're not from this town, they don't care.
Good point.
Can I make a suggestion? What I would, what I would recommend, and it's just a recommendation, is no parking on the Aquay side and on the opposite side with the permit.
I amend my motion to reflect Town Manager's wisdom.
Second.
Roll call?
Sorry.
Yes.
Tom? Tom?
Yes.
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 Well, that was good.
A little comedy.
Okay. Water quality presentation, Brian House.
Madam Chair, the IT is going to move the computer over here for Mr. Howes, if that's okay with you.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
IT department will be moving the computer to the, over here for Brian.
Yeah, we got it.
Go ahead.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a few minutes? Okay. Do you want to do old business communications and correspondence? Old business?
Good.
Laser on reports?
I will. Just had a number of productive conversations with Sewer Commission and have, you know, had some good success working out operational concerns with Town Manager and the new town engineer, so...
Please take the conversation outside.
So I think we're, you know, we're in good shape operationally to move project forward now.
Good. Anybody else laser on report?
Town Seal Committee is moving forward. We have a couple of renderings. We're looking at our next meeting to kind of finalize and narrow it down. And then we're thinking of presenting to the Board and maybe having a public hearing to just gauge some community input on where we're at.
All right, good. Anybody else? All set?
I am, yeah, good.
Good. Okay. Town Manager updates?
St. Tewin and Schumett Bonds, we're continuing to monitor those as a result of the blooms. These are being closely monitored. The accounting department is in the final stages of closing our fiscal year 2021. We're also monitoring the COVID-19 increases in Barnstable cases. The Delta variant has certainly been reported publicly. I think everybody is aware of the recent developments in Provincetown. And right now, the fireworks are being proposed for September 18th with a rain date of the 19th. This particular date has been reviewed by all town staff that would be impacted, including police, fire, as well as the school and recreation. So I think that's just about finalized, but that's the date that we would be proposing. And I think that's it.
And then just a quick update on the...
Oh, one other thing, Madam Chair. The letter that the Board instructed me to send out has been received. I think every property owner has received it regarding...
Did that go to every property owner?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yes. Or it was supposed to be, yeah.
Okay. And a discussion and action on draft one. Everybody just look over.
You want to go back to...
Oh, we're ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Brian.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry for the technical difficulties before. Well, I'm here today to give you an update, not on summer 18, but on actually 19 and 20. All right. My mistake. But usually, you know, I've come here, I've talked to you guys many times before about thresholds, about regulatory thresholds, about how to avoid lawsuits, things like that. And it's, I usually can find something very good in, that's going on in the estuaries of Mashpee. And I'll tell you, for the first time in 20 years, I got nothing good to say. I could end, I could leave now. I said, for the first time in 20 years, I have nothing good to say. Sorry about that. I'll go through the, just the background a little bit for those who haven't seen this before. But the basic problem is in our estuaries, in Mashpee and worldwide, big issue is nitrogen loading. It's been that way for a long time. We know that. We now know that's the problem for almost every estuary on Cape Cod and in southeastern Massachusetts, in fact. They're all overloaded and they all have some level of degradation. The enrichment in nitrogen is causing real impairments to not only the water quality with increased alga blooms, low oxygen, but we've lost our real grass and we're losing our benthic animals, which means we'll start losing our fish, or we've already started losing our fish, we just don't know yet. The only way that you can really fix the problem is you can either get the water out quicker, which you're not going to be able to do in either Pompaneset Bay or in Wacoit, that's already been done, that was a low-hanging fruit, and we attacked that more than a decade ago, and that's in place already. So you can't get more out of that. The other thing to do is you can control what goes in, how much goes in, and that's what the town is trying to do now with its Phase 1 wastewater plan. And also, you can try to increase nitrogen removal and transport, which also has been done a little bit, but hasn't been maximized yet in these two embayments.
And how do you do that, Brian?
Usually, in a town, in Mashpee, it would be by, by either trying to do wetland restoration of cranberry bogs into freshwater wetlands and ponds, which would intercept the nitrogen. It's a natural process. It used to go on all over the place. We then converted the freshwater wetlands to cranberry bogs. Now they're fallow, restoring them back. If it's done the right way, restoring it back to be a nice freshwater wetland is great. But if it doesn't have, isn't designed with the idea of lowering the nitrogen that's transported through it, then it's not going to work. You'll have a nice wetland, but it won't lower the nitrogen passing through it. There are programs like that. There's a program going in right now. It's already been funded and it's going in Harwich, where they built both freshwater wetlands and freshwater ponds in a cranberry bog that used to be freshwater wetland. And now that is going on already. We'll get some good information on that pretty much in a year or so. That's one way. The other way is salt marsh restoration, which also is going on a bit. Let's see, I was worried about hitting the wrong button here. All right. Well, the water quality program itself, actually, I should say, I'll say one positive thing. Water quality program itself has been operating very well. We have the volunteers. It's a collaborative between the tribe and the town and the university. And we've met all our sampling all these years, the, everyone is still participating in full, the samples, we're collecting 100% of our samples that we're supposed to get. And that's important because we've scaled back the program to sort of a minimum level that works. But it's, it's okay, as long as you get all those samples and everybody does what they're supposed to do. And so far, that has been done. The program is overseen by the Mashpee Waterways Commission. The goals are to assess the nutrient-lated water quality of each estuary, we've done, reported on before, but also to track short and long-term changes in the embayment, in the embayment health. And you'll hear a little bit of that tonight. And also to look for specific validation of nitrogen management alternatives, such as if you're doing a nitrogen removal on a freshwater pond or a lake, or if you're building a treatment plant and you're putting in sewers, that's what's meant by nitrogen management. And we hope to see those changes going forward. In Wacoit, we have 18 estuary stations, the red dots, and we have sort of four sampling events a year. We also measure what's coming in from the freshwater streams. I won't be talking about that today, but, but that's where the load, a lot of the load enters the bay through the freshwater streams, carrying watershed-derived nitrogen mainly from septic systems that enter the groundwater, that enter the stream, that then enter the bay. In Pompaneset, we have a few less, it's a smaller system, a little less complex, but we have six estuary stations and four sampling events as well. And you notice that there's, there's, samples are distributed all throughout both of these bays, both, both Pompaneset and Wacoit. That does a lot for our ability to predict meeting regulatory TMDLs from the data we have. We can really bang that out. If you only had one station, you would not be deemed legitimate. So this gives us a good thing, and also provides cross checks between the different sampling teams. There's a lot of value to that, and it doesn't really add much since the sampling is all done by volunteers from the tribe and the town and actually the university as well. And they all volunteer to this program because it's, it's actually one of the better programs around in the region. All right. One, just a little piece of data. The reason we're interested in nitrogen is this shows salinity on the, on the bottom axis, the nitrogen phosphorus ratio on the, on the left axis. And the whole point of this is if the dots are above the red line, it means that phosphorus, phosphorus fertilizes. You get a phosphorus, you might have a bloom. But all the ones really are below the line, if you notice, except for a few in that very brackish salinity, very, very low salinity area in the five to eight parts per thousand range. All the rest show that nitrogen fertilizes. And we've done this every year. This is from 18, but we've done it, we do this every year and it looks the same. This is just the one that I had easiest access to. This is still background. It indicates that we need to, that we need to manage for nitrogen to restore the system. The other thing is, is that, another way to check is, if you look at this, those dots are sampling points, raw data from the field. Particulate nitrogen is just nitrogen in particular form, and in this case, it looks like it's 100% in the form of phytoplankton. It's associated 1:1 with the chlorophyll A, which means it's phytoplankton. So it's not leaves. When we started this project, there was an argument out that it was, it was leaves from the trees around the pond, but that wouldn't look like this, or that it was, was turbidity coming in from the streams, you'd get, you know, silt and clay coming in, but that doesn't have any chlorophyll. So again, we're just trying to drive home the point that not only do we know that nitrogen causes all these negative effects, but we also know that in these bays, that is what is, is controlling those alga blooms that you see, both the macroalga blooms and the phytoplankton blooms that you see. All right. So the, I always used to show the left-hand slide here and say, so this is the, the distribution of nitrogen in the bay under 2010 loading, which was sort of when we started really intensively the, the new, it was the new branded water quality monitoring program. And you, and the idea is dark blue is that it's high quality, or not high quality, but it's lower. Red is it's very high, and you look at that and you say, well, yeah, that's, there's high spots, and I see in the eastern embayments in Wacoit. But the problem is, is the right-hand graph is that you see that as build-out continues, the nitrogen levels in the estuaries are getting higher and higher and higher and higher. Now mainly in the upper reaches, they'll get highest first because that's where the streams discharge, that's where groundwater nitrogen is just, is focused. But you see, it just gets higher because of build-out. Nobody's, nobody is doing anything to the bay, the tide is the same, but you're just increasing the amount of development, an increased amount, in this case, of septic systems for residential development. That is our primary development in the town of Mashpee. Even with the Comas, it's still resident, it's us. Same thing with, with Pompaneset Bay, the scales are the same. Left was back in 2008, right is at build-out. And you just see the Mashpee River just turns bright red, which is exceedingly high nitrogen, by the way.
Brian?
Yeah.
Are those build-outs assuming continuation of reliance on septics and not intervention?
Yeah. It is before last May.
Okay.
So it was accurate up till last May, when you guys had your unanimous town meeting. Okay. So that's the bright spot. But what you're seeing is not going to get better. And the other thing in this, I would like you to notice is that you notice that in Pompaneset Bay, where it all comes together with Mashpee River discharge, Shoestring River, Shoestring Bay and Aquay Bay discharge, that upper basin, you'll notice that you're starting to then push the high nitrogen water down into the main bay. And that's happening in Wacoit, it's here, it's just you're loading up the top, it's obviously got to leave, and so it's, it's moving down, increasing not just where it discharges, but in the main bay is now becoming more and more impacted. Not going to show a lot of graphs tonight, I don't need to as it ends up, but I'll show the regulatory graphs, okay? These are the ones that, that you don't ever want to see when you're, when you're sitting with a regulator. The bars represent data all the way from our long-term mean, which is pre-2010, and then brackets of, three-year brackets of 2010 to '12, '13 to '15, '16 to '18, and then '19 and '20 are the last two years we had. What you see is that in the left-hand suite with a threshold of .38 and the right-hand suite, threshold of .3, you notice that every single bar in every single year is over that threshold. In the middle one, Quashnet River gets a slightly higher threshold, but you notice every single bar at every single station, every single year is above the threshold. That's a regulatory threshold. That is the TMDL. And so that's what people argue about in court. I like dogs.
Tom, can you mute your phone?
All right. So...
Yeah.
Please, thank you.
The result of that is that you're seeing alga blooms, we use chlorophyll A as the surrogate for phytoplankton biomass. There's a relationship between the amount of chlorophyll A you have and the amount of phytoplankton there are. It's very difficult to measure phytoplankton biomass, but we can quantify very accurately the amount of chlorophyll. The red line at the bottom is, actually, it says sound, but it isn't, it's, it's, it's higher than the sound. It's actually, if you're over that line, you're, you're in eutrophic conditions. But the basic point is, is the horizontal line, that's, if the bay was cleaned up, that's where all those bars would be. It's not a regulatory number, but that's where it would be. If all those bars came down to the red line, we'd be happy. You could see that some of them are good, like ER low on, sort of mid, in the middle, you'll see that until 2020, it was, it was below the line. And you see in WB, which is Wacoit Bay low, which is down near the inlet, you can see until, again, 2020, it was below the line. And in fact, if you really look at this, which I don't expect you to do for length, although the document is out, even the shorthand presentation is out, and what you do, if you really stare at this, you will see that since 2016, phytoplankton growth and blooms in this system have grown, increased in frequency and increased in magnitude. We always predicted that would happen someday. You know it's going to happen, as long as you keep bleeding in more nitrogen, it's going to happen. And it's now here. In all of the basins, and this is Wacoit. So, and it's highest in the uppermost basins, but you can see the, the one in the middle, the QR, that's Quashnet River, is just unbelievably high. I mean, those numbers are astronomical. Likely in those sites, there's absolutely nothing living that's an animal in those sites. Okay. Told you it wasn't good news. Okay. Then we, we also use an index, just to speed things up, we use an index that uses the amount of phytoplankton there are, how much oxygen is depleted in the system, how much nitrogen there is in the system, how clear the water is. And you mush all that together and you come up with one number. Now, it's not a number you're going to plan for necessarily, but it's a pretty good number to tell you how things are going. And what you see here in 19 and 20, the left-hand triangle is 19, the right-hand triangle is 2020, the averages, you'll see that in the upper reaches, like in Quashnet, in Childs, in Eel River, those red triangles mean that it is significantly impaired, is highly impaired, it goes down as poor water quality. And poor water quality doesn't mean in any way acceptable. It is exceedingly bad. High oxygen depletion, so it's getting down to three and four milligrams per liter. It's just really, really bad. The yellow reds, which you see now in the Seaford River and in the middle of the main basin and in the middle of Eel River, and now also a little bit in Hamlin Pond, which used to not be that way, are now showing that they're, they're already down, they're, they're sort of almost poor. It's sort of... that they're already down. They're sort of almost poor. It's sort of half-poor, half-chumey. Okay? It's not quite as bad as red, but it's bad. And the yellow just means it's moderately impaired. Levels are high, but the impairment is not to the extent where there's nothing living. Okay? It's still, there's still some valid use to the system, but it's impaired. Any one of those stations would say that, the regulatory agencies would say, this system is impaired. You will have to fix that. And you'll see that every single station is red or yellow. And the bad news is, this is how it used to look not that long ago, about four years ago. If you look, you'll see the same reds and everything, yellows and all that. But you'll notice in the lower part of Eel Pond on the left, and in the lower part of Wacoit Bay nearest the inlet, is always the best water quality in the bay. And you'll see that now in the last four years, when this happens for a year, it doesn't matter so much. We don't go crazy. But this has been continuous now for four years. This is it. This is the new now. And you'll see that now there is no high-water quality area remaining in Wacoit Bay. It's gone. Four years ago, five years ago, it was here. Now it's totally gone. And it's been gone every year for the last four years. That's why I can make this statement tonight. This is, I'm not going to go through this in any detail, other than if you look at the trend column, which is the second from the left, what do you see? Well, the water quality is declining, declining, declining. It's not quite as bad in Yehu Pond and Hamlin Pond as in the rest of the bay. The shellfish actually did make a different, a pretty good difference a couple of years ago. It's sort of weakening as things have been trending downwards, but it's still an effect that you can see. It still is having a positive effect. It's just not enough to restore that system at this point. And the other ones, even Upper Quashnet, it's unchanging because you just can't get worse than it is. I have never seen a system almost as bad as that. And in Charles River, it's not changing, but it's horrible. And Upper Eel River is not changing, but it's also poor water quality. Lower end, near the inlet, is what has just changed in the last five years. And the lower basin in Wacoit Bay is also declined to poor water quality, or moderate water. Same graph for Papaneset is Wacoit. That's the threshold. That is the regulatory threshold where all those bars should be at or below that threshold. And what you'll see is virtually none of them are, not even down near the mouth of the bay. They're all in excess of that threshold, and it has the same effect as in Wacoit. Papaneset just got there a little sooner than Wacoit. So again, all the stations exceed the TMDL threshold in each of the years. Same thing. As you see, there's mainly reds and yellows, and yellow reds in the upper part. The main basin is always the last thing to go. And you'll see it's only moderately impaired, and there's still good, some good habitat in there, but not great habitat. It would not be deemed, it would not be deemed healthy. It would be deemed moderately impaired, which is still impaired. So in a regulatory sense, the whole system is impaired. Usually in a system, it's only the upper tributaries. It'd only be Shoestring Bay, Mashpee River, and Aquay Bay. But now it's crept down, and I remember a time when the main bay was blue. So it has crept down into the main bay. It's moving towards the inlet. Same thing. We have some declines, but there's just nothing improving. And why would it? We haven't done too much, and we've done more in Wacoit than we've done in Papaneset. Although the one good thing we did in Papaneset was, years ago, Waterways got a revolving fund to maintain that inlet open all the time, which maintains a good flushing of that system. The system's pretty much flushing as good as it's going to flush. And if that, if it hadn't been done, think of how bad it would be if the system just stopped flushing. It would be much worse than it is now. Okay. So the general findings are that there's general impairment throughout both estuaries. No high-water quality areas remain. There's been a gradual decline in the lower basins over the last five or 10 years to make them worse. And the upper tributary basins remain just significantly impaired because they're such poor water quality, it's hard to get it worse. Frequency and magnitude of phytoplankton blooms is increasing. 2016 and '17, we had monstrous blooms throughout both bays, also in three bays. It's not, it's not a Mashpee problem. This is a regional problem. And the magnitude's going up, but it's not every year. What'll happen is, first, in the old days, it was once in a while. Then in 2016, '17, it was monstrous for the summer, and now it's coming with periodic blooms for a week or two or three. But that, the frequency of those has increased from a long time ago, not very much, to now a lot. And there's clear evidence that the declines are due to nitrogen enrichment in bay waters, the connection between, the demonstrated connection between nitrogen concentration in the bay and the phytoplankton, the phytoplankton and the low oxygen, things like that. So, and I got to tell you, this is basic. This is not unique. This is the classic cascade in ecology that really nobody argues with anymore because there's thousands and thousands of examples of this now. It's just that we're quantifying in a way to help you with management. Next set of results were that the results indicate the monitoring program is able to detect changes in response to implementation, like the shellfish. We actually could measure the effect of the shellfish for a couple of years there. And we even got a little bit last year. So it hasn't gone completely away. It's just that it's no longer improving. It's now sort of going down again as load increases. And the good news is, the town implementing CWMV Phase One, we will track, hopefully, and see the water quality now start to improve. People say, well, how long does it take? Well, it depends on where you would do your implementation. But most of Papaneset Bay, for instance, the watershed is within 10-year travel time of the bay. Almost 80% or more is within 10-year travel time. So if you're doing any soaring in that, that means the impact of that would be from one to 10 years hitting the bay, very fast. You wouldn't have to wait 20 years for that to happen. You wouldn't have to wait for your kids to be older, like me. So, that's sort of good news on how quickly the bay can restore. So I want to thank all the volunteers from the town and the tribe. There's no way to do this without the volunteers. The cost would be astronomical. They show up, like tomorrow morning, everybody's going to be getting their boats at 5:30 in the morning to go out on the bay. Welcome to join us anytime you want. And also to the Mashpee Waterways Commission, because especially Don McDonald has kept this thing pushing along the logistics to keep people on track and timing and all that. And the quality of the data is significantly due to his efforts. So that's it. Thank you. Sorry. I live here too. It makes me sad. All right?
Makes me sad, too.
Andy, do you want to call these guys?
Should we do?
Yeah, no, we'll take questions. But who do you want? Do you want to call?
We'll take just a few questions.
Yes, a question for Dr. House.
Okay. You need to come up to the mic.
Just so everybody can hear you.
I'm Mike Rapaz from Quiniquis at Ave. A question for Dr. House. How are the shellfish doing in the Mashpee River?
The shellfish are doing okay in the Mashpee River, and okay in Hamlin Pond, as far as I know. Ashley can correct me on that. The problem is really that it's the number that we have, the issue is to put in enough shellfish to help knock down the nitrogen in the bay by their feeding and deposition, and then you harvest them and you take out that nitrogen. But it's always a question of scale. And as, we know that it works. We've seen it in Mashpee Waters, not only there, but other places in the Cape. So we know it works. It's a question of how many you can put in, and how much energy you're going to put into doing that. And then the cost benefit of that versus the cost benefit of soaring and other issues. One nice thing about shellfish, you can put them in today. You don't have to go through all the 20 years of construction, but it really comes down to the numbers and what they are. But they're, the shellfish, cohogs and oysters can tolerate the low oxygen conditions. So they just clean them up. So as long as it's not anoxic for a month, they'll survive through those periods, and they grow, oysters grow exceedingly fast.
Jesse.
Let me ask my own, oh, go ahead.
So, just to...
Mic drop.
Sorry. Jesse Littledo. So, just to be clear, this is very interesting, but you talk really fast. So, the main two causes are basically flushing our toilets, toilets, and fertilizer. That's what I saw in one slide. Toilets, so houses, construction toilets.
That's wastewater.
Wastewater. Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to be clear, because there was a gentleman that once said, you know, if we cut everything down, and we name the place after a tree, and we just put houses and toilets in this place, we're going to be in a lot of trouble soon. And that was Vernon Parknett about 20 years ago, and he was absolutely right about that.
I'm sorry about the talking, fast. I've lived here for 51 years, and I still have some New Jersey tailings in me.
Andrew has a question.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make clear, you said that from your studies, the bays flush as well as they're going to. So there's been talk, various talk, I've been starting to hear some things. And in Papaneset, where people are arguing for dredging projects internal to the bay, part of the rationale being it would improve water quality. Would you speak to whether internal dredging would make things better or worse?
Yeah, actually, thanks. That's a good question. Yeah, the basic issue is, is that you only can improve water quality if the water flowing in and out, that volume of water that goes in and out every time can be increased. Okay? So if there's a block at the inlet, a restriction, the water can't get in, well, then if you dredge or widen it, then you get more in, and then you get more out, and you increase the flushing. But we know that Papaneset is already maximally flushing. If you widen the inlet, you're not going to get more water in and out. You might change the circulation a bit if you took away Papaneset's spit, but we don't want to do that. But you, but you're not going to get more water in and out of the bay. And it's very simple. If you stand in the bay as the tide rises in the sound, the tide rises in the bay at the same rate. Where's the restriction? If there was a restriction, tide would rise here, and the tide would rise slower here because the water can't get in to fill up the bucket. And we know, we've done that, put gauges all over the bay. The other thing is, which is something people don't, if you'll bear with me, don't take into account ever, is that if you have a basin, a bay, just one big basin, and the tide comes in and out, and you deepen this basin, so the water is here, and the water never empties these bays, so the water drops, and then there's still all this water. If you deepen that, then you're going to, water's going to drop, and there's going to be all this water. So there's more water, which means it's not leaving at the same rate anymore. It's not flushing. Reduce the flushing rate. We have sound systems where people have dredged the channel, and the water quality's gotten worse because you just reduce the flushing time. You have to think about, I'm happy to spend any time with anybody who wants the explanation of that, because it comes up all the time. Okay?
So, summary, no water quality benefit from internal flood, from internal dredging inside the bays.
Right.
And we maximize what we can do absent taking the spits out.
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah.
Thank you.
But don't forget that it can get worse. That's important, because it's not one of these ways you can spend the money and do the dredge, and no harm, no foul, nothing happened. You could actually make it worse.
Thank you.
Any other questions, John?
So I have a couple, but one of them, actually, you kind of asked the question already, but I'm going to say it anyways. To your, are you aware of any extreme measures as far as discussing, that would have been discussed, as far as increasing the amount of the flush? I understand what you just said, but I just, I wrote the question down earlier. Is there something even, even like, extreme, an extreme measure that would increase that flush?
The only thing you can do is you can change the circulation somehow, but that involves like punching holes in things that you'll never get a permit to punch holes in. And it would alter the whole flushing of the bay and could just, you'd have to really study that to death. Normally, if you have a two-inlet system like Wacoit, the more strong inlet takes over, and the other one closes up. But sometimes what happens is, is that the strong inlet and the other inlet are both equally strong. What happens, actually, the bay divides in half. And now you have two bays. And so you have to be very careful of altering anything with the barrier inlet, but you're not going to increase the total volume exchange. And right now, some of the best water in Papaneset is in the creeks. And it's because the water comes in the inlet, goes along the spit, and out through the creeks and under that bridge by Papaneset, head of Papaneset Island. So it's very strange how water moves around these bays, but there will be no effect on the amount of water that comes in and out through that inlet.
My, your mind, Chair, thank you. So, will increasing the treated affluent, being exported into the bay, will that severely hinder our clean water?
Well, you're going to treat the water before you discharge it, right?
Correct.
So, and I don't know what it is at now, five or 10, you know? Three, okay, so five. So, no, three. Okay. So the thing is, the amount of nitrogen that goes into that bay, most of it leaves the bay anyway. It doesn't go into the bay and stop, because it comes into the bay as inorganic forms. It becomes phytoplankton. It could become live or dead phytoplankton. It may fall to the bottom and come back up. But eventually, most of it leaves the bay as those phytoplankton in about the same amount that it comes into the bay. All of these bays export nitrogen, and usually in organic forms, all of them. So it's not going to, if you remove, lower the nitrogen that goes into the bay, you'll lower the amount of phytoplankton, so you'll lower the amount of nitrogen that you're putting offshore over what it is today.
So at a level of, what, three? So you're, so that's not a major...
No, it's actually going to be a big improvement, both in the near, like offshore in Nantucket Sound, but in the nearshore region. And it'll be a huge improvement in the bays themselves.
Oh, because it's...
Because you're putting much less in, and so you can, you'll have much less transported in Nantucket Sound. And by putting in much less into the bays, you'll have less phytoplankton blooms, you'll have better oxygen, and you'll have lower nitrogen levels in the bays.
So that treated affluent is actually at a lower level than what it's, where it's being pumped into?
Yeah, septic systems are putting out 10 times that.
Okay.
David, any questions?
You know, this is really, it's really bothersome and troubling to hear. You know, I think about what the bay used to yield on its own for, you know, it used to, it didn't need to be propagated with shellfish. It was, it would, you know, grow enough shellfish on its own, you know, in a natural way. And now we're supplementing that and propagating it just to try to mitigate the nitrogen that we're putting in it. And, you know, that, and yet we're still entertaining, you know, regional projects that are going to further impede that. And, you know, we have to start looking at regional without blinders and such a narrow focus on specific projects, and look at regional impacts. You know, and I look at this, and this is a study specifically on the abeyment, but, you know, further, the point source is way up the river.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you know, with soaring and everything, we can't just focus on cleaning the bay. You have to fix the head of the snake, you know, cut off the head of the snake. So we need to address the, up around the ponds, and, you know, all those areas if we're going to make any kind of impact. We're not trying to stay status quo. We're trying to repair a system that is severely detrimental. Everyone in the room heard that, that, you know, we're going to have major fish kills, you know, if we don't do something. So, you know, this is really troubling to hear. You know, I thank you for your information. It's good to have, especially with the current conversations with some of the large-scale regional projects that are going on. And I thank you for that.
Thank you for that. We also, this all grew out of, we did the Estuaries Project work for this, which did a parcel-by-parcel analysis of the entire watershed of both basins and identified all the sources of nitrogen within those. So we, to identify where it's coming from, and how much it's coming in, and then going into the bay to see what the effect is. And so the monitoring program just keeps, is a good way to, it's a less expensive way to track, are you doing your improvements in the watershed, actually improving the bay? Because fundamentally, we don't care about the watershed so much. We care about the bay. And the reason you're doing soaring, a lot of it, there can be failures of septic thing, but is for water quality improvements.
Tom?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Hey, Brian, Tom, how are you doing?
Hi. Just great.
Hey, Brian. So, all along, I always kind of thought that, like, that Brian had just said, that the problem is coming down from the ponds, rivers, and lakes, and into the bays. And that was an accumulation of all of the nitrogen in the freshwater coming into our bays, which was creating the issue. And this has been going on a long time. One of my major concerns now, it's too late to address it, I think, because we're doing what we can by installing wastewater treatment systems and tying in a number of people. That's probably five to 10 years down the road, just on the Mashpee Neck, in the Mashpee Neck area. And then beyond that, there'll probably be 20 years. So, what do we do to make... And then beyond that, it'll probably be 20 years. So what do we do to make an immediate impact, take an immediate impact, do we put D-Nite systems into all property that is within a certain distance from any wetlands, whether it be a river or a wetland, a bog, whatever, and get those in place and have an immediate impact? And then when the time comes, 10, 20 years down the road, have them tie in to the new treatment plan. Because it sounds to me, if it's bad now, it's only gonna get worse in the next years. We're talking five to 10 years down the road, we have a real big problem on our hands. And it'll be too late if we don't do something immediately as far as what I'm hearing you saying.
I think that the, one thing you always have to keep in mind, we've been involved in the planning side for a long time. If, if the, you can get all these IA systems in and if they're treating to below 10, you're treating your wastewater to three, they treat to less than 10 reliably, then you can make a significant impact. But that takes time too. And so you have to look at the time it takes you to do that, the time it takes you to do the wastewater. And what we've found in other systems, if you push people do IA systems or certain other septic upgrades, they become very resistant to hooking up to treatment plants. They say, I just spent $25,000 or $30,000, I don't want to hook up to your treatment plant. So that's a policy issue. I'm standing beside the policymakers. And so I think that's the only thing I would consider as I was going through that. And we've done a lot of planning in Mashpee. I mean, you guys have and everybody has.
Can I just follow up on that for a minute? So Brian, are you aware of any IA system that gets below 19 that's approved for general use?
There are no septic systems, IA systems, or any other septic systems that I know that right now, today, are approved for general use that get below 10 or below, or even 12 or below.
Right. So the problem we face is even if there's logic behind doing it, there's no system that has enough performance.
Right. It's gonna be another couple of years before, there are some systems out there, a couple actually, that are looking very good, but they're years from being general use, at least two or three or four.
We, the town manager and the assistant town manager and I, we saw one of those systems being tested up at the base. And he told us it was effective and ready for installation. So I'd like to follow that. That's up to me and the town manager and maybe all of the board members to take a look at this. And in addition to that, at the time we were there, they were just thinking of a system that would monitor the D-Nite system and tell you if it was not working properly. So you'd have a system that would remind you you have a problem or take care of it. So, and this was just recently.
No, it is very recently, in fact, because I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Well, thank you, Brian. Okay, question?
Yes, Joe Lyons. Thank you for talking.
Hey, Joe.
Go to the mic, Joe.
Selecting Wayne made a point that our major problem today is cutting the head off the snake. We know what the snake is, we know how to deal with it. We've gone forward with a 25-year plan to do that. So what is it we could do today to cut the head off the snake and address the pollution up high in the estuaries, the ponds, the lakes, the rivers, before they pollute the saltwater estuaries? What can we do today to those freshwater polluted areas?
There's, you can either try some of these softer solutions, but those are local. Those are not gonna treat the whole watershed, doing this wetland restoration. That takes time too. There was a project looked at in, below the Santuit Pond at one point with the EP and EPA for doing some of that stuff. But that's not gonna solve the whole problem. I mean, I hate to say it, but, you know, it's in the ground now. And until you start taking it out somehow, that's, that's gonna be a problem. I mean, you could try some of the other solutions like PRBs and things, but they have their own problems too, and they're expensive. So it just comes down to, I think the town has looked at a bunch of alternative methods for lowering nitrogen. If you wanted to look at some localized ones, that, that can always be done, and those would be pretty much immediate. But it's, it's, you know, I'm sorry, I moved here in 1997 and we were talking about putting in sewers, all right? Not my fault.
So Brian, not a science question? Is it fair to say that the sooner you stop the input, the sooner the systems will work themselves out? And if we accelerated the consideration of sewer-ing in the upper watersheds, along the rivers, along the ponds, if we did that sooner, we would have cleaner bays sooner, right? Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, as soon as, as soon as you start taking nitrogen out, things will improve. But it's not just in the upper bays and way up in the watershed, lower down in the watershed and closer to the, like, like the watershed to Aquay Bay, for instance, is, has no attenuation, and the water goes right in, and that discharges directly to the bay. But then you wouldn't want a sewer up above, way up in the system, because there's so many ponds that they naturally, only 6% of the nitrogen from way up there makes it to the beginning.
Right, but what contributes directly to Mashpee Wakeby and Santuit, then flows out through those rivers, if I understood your presentation right, that's, those freshwater transports are major conduits. So
Yes.
We started to pick up those portions of the watershed sooner, we'd have cleaner bays and cleaner ponds
Right.
more rapidly than are planned. So I think it's a political, financial question to us, whether we want to follow the plan 25 years of Joe's citation or speed it up.
Yeah, if you speed it up, things will get better. But again, I think you need to also consider doing something in, in the non-attenuated watershed.
Understood.
Then you'll get stuck right away.
One question I have is, there was, there was talk of the tribe trying to get, work out with Army Corps to dredge Santuit Pond. If you were to dredge that and say, put the waste in some of those bog systems, and do you think something like that, where you have cleaner water at the head source, and would that help the system lower?
What happens with, if you dredge, it makes things deeper, that's fine. But nutrient-wise, other than deeper, it's having the same effect, effectiveness really as adding alum or adding phosphoric or dredging. You scrape off the top in dredging, in phosphoric and alum, you cap the bentex sediments and lock in the phosphorus that's there. That's what's called phosphoric. But alum does the same thing. And then it lasts in a good way until all the new stuff that falls every year, you know, there's phytoplankton growing every year, and they fall to the bottom, and they go next year, and the next year, and the next year, and the next year. And eventually, that builds up. And that's where all the active phosphorus and nitrogen cycling is, in that top sediment. And once that fills up to a certain amount, you're back to where you are now. So, and the reason alum stops working is because all that falling on top and covering it up. And then you get, this is where the high action is. Phosphoric, same thing, cover it up. And with dredging, you scrape it off, and then it builds up again. So it's not a permanent solution. It depends on how much is going in each year from the Santuit watershed, whether, how much, how long it would last. In assumption, the first one they did, hadn't closed down all the phosphorus sources, and it lasted 78 years. And then they did another one, which is still lasting now. But, which would have the same effect. All right. Did I answer that?
Yes.
Hi, I just had a question. I haven't heard anything about dry toilets. Has that been looked into at all?
Yeah, if I might. So the town looked at it, and its plan, looked at different alternatives, both on the treatment side and treatment, and toilet technologies. I think what we've found is that the relying on changes in people's behavior, for better for worse, I'm not saying it's a good thing, but it's a reality and experience that's been seen in other places, is that expecting people to change their bathroom behavior doesn't yield you very much. There's a very small number of people who've adopted composting toilets and the like that do do a good job, obviously, limiting their contribution to the nutrient load, but it's got very small market share. The town of Falmouth looked at urine-diverting toilets several years ago and actually provided a $5,000 direct payment as an incentive to do it. They got one. It was the person who came up with the proposal. So it just, it just hasn't, it says a lot about American society, but that's what it says about American society. Those types of interventions don't have a lot of uptick. People are really concerned about resale. I'm willing to do it, but then I can't sell my house because nobody wants this kind of plumbing system in the house. You heard all those kind of arguments out there. So it doesn't, we did not invest in that as an approach, as part of our solution, because the evidence has been, in Massachusetts anyway, that you're not gonna have that as an uptake, and that people won't do it.
You know, I know that one.
I know you do. I chose not to say who it was. We didn't need to go down that road.
So I am on a stiff learning curve here. But the question I have is, since I've, myself and my neighbors got Rodney's lovely letter about nitrogen, some of my neighbors have said, but we don't live near a pond, so we can still use nitrogen to fertilize because it's not going into a pond. So I think there's really a very limited, and there are thousands of people who aren't here tonight trying to figure this out. I think we have a very limited, really, understanding that there are drains in our street, and those drains go somewhere, and that's where the runoff is. So, but there is this idea that, oh, the nitrogen is just all the problem with the ponds. And I live off Redbrook Road, and we don't have a pond right next by. So I think there's somehow or another, we have to really evolve our education about the nitrogen because people don't think it applies to them. I mean, my neighbors, it's like, yeah, that's not our problem. That's if you live near Mashpee Pond. So thank you very much.
But like, like Andrew has been saying, green lawn, green ponds.
So Brian, now, are wetland buffers at, what, 100 feet? If you increase the wetland buffer to, you know, 200, 300 feet, and, you know, any construction moving forward, you know, have tight tank systems or something that needs to be pumped out, would that make any kind of, I mean, it's gonna be minimal because you're only addressing new construction, but I mean...
The distance of travel in this aquifer we have, which is really nice, pure sand, which is why we have such good drinking water until we contaminate it, right, is the phosph- the nitrate is just gonna go. Phosphorus, on the other hand, doesn't go. And about 300 feet buffer for phosphorus, from the septic tank to the receiving water, is a pretty good number. That's what, what most scientists are thinking is, is how far phosphorus moves in a rational amount of decades. Further than that is much better. But eventually, that will be saturated too. And the good thing about sewer-ing, if you sewer in an area where there's ponds, people can say, but you're not getting the same bang for the buck because it's upgrading of a pond, and the pond's gonna take some of the nitrogen. Yes, but the sewer takes out the phosphorus. So you get a bang there too. And in some ponds that we've managed, that we're recommending, very small scale, near pond sewer, you know, 500-foot, 400-foot buffer, because those plumes have already broken through to the pond and are a major source of phosphorus to the pond.
And does your report identify how much is contributed to stormwater?
If you look on the website, I think the town still probably has the Massachusetts Estuary Project studies, and they're, yeah, they're technical and they're boring, but nonetheless, it has that data in it. There's one for each system. And the one good news that you have to know that nobody, I never bring up, I always forget, is that in Wacoit Bay, you guys are sort of in charge of Quashnet and Hamlin and Yehu Pond, the Great River. Quashnet, I'll be long dead before anything improves there. But Quashnet, but Hamlin Pond System and the Great River, Little River and Yehu Pond, those systems, because of the circulation of the bay and the way they have fresh water coming through, are the best part of Wacoit Bay. And in fact, we did analysis back in the MEP days that showed that you could actually restore those basins without having to restore all of Poppin' Asset Bay, which is what everybody thought you had to do. So they're sort of like a little island unto themselves that you could see.
You know, Wacoit.
You know, Wacoit. Hamlin, Yehu, Little River, Great River, those. Which is a really neat thing for management. You know, get something back. We were recommending early on that, do that first because you'll show the improvement, you'll be able to sell it.
Just as an aside, tight tanks are illegal under the state environmental code as a permanent solution.
Jeez.
You can't tight, you can't tight take them and live there unless it's a remedial situation.
Yes. Go ahead. Richard, come up to the mic.
Here, I'll come to you. You wanna stay there? I'll bring this over.
Richard Klein, 205 Ashes Path, question. You're saying our water quality is not going to get any better for at least five to 10 years. Am I correct?
It'll take that, five years or four years after you start.
It'll take four or five years after you actually do something.
Gentlemen, my next question, or asking for an answer. I would like a moratorium on Title V in the town of Mashpee at this point. No more building, no more septic systems. Stop it at now. Thank you.
Okay, we'll take one more, Jesse.
You see me. It's me again. I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Klein, because it seemed like we're talking a lot about what we can do to take out the crap, literally, that we've put in there. But I haven't heard anybody talk about how to not put any more crap in there. And I think that seems to be the elephant in the room. I mean, because if we find a way to get the crap out that we have, but we keep putting more septic systems, more houses, more buildings, we gotta get bigger crap removal systems. I mean, that just seems like simple math. Like, if we really, really mean it, we've got to stop putting the crap in the ground. We've got to stop septic systems. We've got to stop building. There's a point at which the land can't take anymore, and this gentleman is telling us, we've, we've long passed that.
Thank you, Brian, for...
Okay.
Wait a minute, town manager.
I wasn't expecting that term tonight.
I know you referred to the policymakers a few minutes ago, and I know you said that you weren't one. But hypothetically, if you were one, what would you do over the next one to three years?
You would get a drought toilet.
I wouldn't.
And then be in trouble.
I mean, you're, I would, you know what I'd do? I'd get out there and I'd try to accelerate your wastewater plan.
That's right.
I'd spend every minute of my life out there with a big sign that said, let's accelerate the wastewater plan, but try not to bankrupt the town. And I would also look for any low-hanging fruit still. There still might be some low-hanging fruit, but those are small potatoes. But they, anything helps right now. And I might actually fund a little bit more, or at least think about, get in a discussion about, could shellfish work for you a little bit better than they are right now? And so you do it, just you have to think about it, and it might help in the short term. It will not be your long-term solution, probably, but it might be your 10-year solution. We just, if you could stop it from getting worse, just if you could stop it, that would be a big improvement.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation tonight. Thank you very much for your presentation tonight.
I love coming in here.
Thank you.
Rodney, can we, can we get this posted on the website?
We're discussing that right now, Joe.
We'll post the presentation you saw on the website tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, can we put the report, full report on?
Yes. Can we put the report?
Can we put the report or a link to the report?
Yeah, a lot of the data's already on the Clean Water site, if you'll...
Thank you.
But the report went in as well, so they could, should be able to put it on your website.
Okay. Okay, discussion and action on draft one of the October 18, 2021 Annual Town Meeting warrant. We've all got our warrant tonight. Some of us have already looked through it. If there's anything, questions that you have or you would like answers to any of your questions, would you field them to Wayne and Rodney's office, to staff, so we can have the proper people come in and answer our questions? Because I know there's...
Do you want to do a quick run, quick high-level run-through so people at least know what's on it? I'm happy to run through it, if you want.
No, we can do that at our next meeting.
What's our schedule for adoption? Not till...
September, so we're good.
September, mid-September.
Okay.
So I had a couple of questions, if I might.
Okay.
On page three, we were talking about, and I understand the issue about the CARES Act and the need to cover some funding for that. The question that brings to my mind is we've got money coming in through the ARPA, American Recovery and Restoration Program, and I'd like to have a conversation sooner than later about where collectively we intend to put that money.
Okay.
You want to say it?
Put it, I'd like to see it go towards, there's nitrogen, there's money towards wastewater in there for infrastructure and such. I'd like to earmark the full amount towards engineering of our wastewater, long-term. Try and engineer as much of it out as we can, so that if there's any additional infrastructure funding, we can jump on it as shovel-rody projects.
ARPA funds received to date are $744,664, and we anticipate $1,489,329.
All right.
And...
Total or combined?
Combined.
Combined.
That's combined. That's combined. And also, ARPA funds that have gone direct to the Barnstable County on behalf of Mashpee, I want the board to be aware of this amount.
Before.
Now that comes from?
Those are ARPA funds.
The, the feds gave Barnstable County about $41 million-
$41 million, right.
That's theoretically busted out to associate with each one of the towns, but it doesn't necessarily go to the towns.
So the total, uh, ARPA funds, directly or indirectly, to Mashpee through 2024, And I would also point out that the CARES Act funding was $1,250,208. The FEMA funding was $233,766.23.
Wow.
So CARES and FEMA, you know, we had expenses-
Yes, we did.
That were associated with response, that appropriately went to those. This ARPA money, we don't have any ongoing costs, so I, you know, I like David, David brought it to my attention, the idea-
Of putting-
Really like the idea of using this money for spurring a one-time investment that'll have long-term-
I agree.
It's one-time money, it's not repetitive money.
Yeah.
We can buy something important with it-
Exactly.
Like design-
Yeah.
And then build it, or we can let it go off. I don't want to see it going into COLAs and-
No.
Collective bargaining agreements, and all that kind of stuff.
I agree.
You've already had those in quarters.
I know you have, so, if we can have that conversation sooner than later, it's not directly germane to this article-
No, I think that's good.
That sure brings it up.
One of the pieces, based on Brian's presentation, is, you know, what if we looked at, um, growing our own seed in the Wacoit Bay? You know, would that, if we started being able to not have them to buy our, our own seed annually, and start growing our own seed within the Wacoit watershed?
It's worth the conversation with Ashley. I know that, you know, two or three seasons ago, we invested in much smaller seed, bought more at a lower cost. The handling costs, the labor costs, and the survival rates were such that they went back to bigger seed.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know where the, I don't know where the breakpoints are, and how hard it is to raise them. So, it's a conversation that's worth having.
Yeah.
I know we've done both. We bought really tiny stuff, and tried to raise it, and we bought bigger stuff, because the survival rate was way better. So, worth, worth talking about. The other one I wanted to just draw people's attention to is, I'm not sure where it is. There's a little article on here from Natural Resources, um, oh, it's on the bottom of page six, um, to fund, some money to be determined to fund the detailed study of Mashpee Wakeby, that you'd need to understand what's going on. So Ashley's going to bid that-
Okay.
So that there's a fill-in number, the estimate, working estimate at the moment, $350.
$350, okay.
So, it, it fits in with the conversation we were just having.
Yes, it does.
And then the only other ones I wanted to, I know we don't have any ability to alter lawfully submitted petition articles, which I assume these are this time.
I have a question about the petition articles. Has, has there been either a public hearing, or anything?
Not yet, not until we schedule them on the warrant.
Okay.
But anyway, I'd like, if the planner could give us sort of a plain English explanation of this cluster zoning articles that are all related to solar, what do they allow? What do they change?
Yeah, because it's-
Where do they, where, where do they cover, and where-
And what about the neighborhoods?
If these pass, what are we going to see, and where are we going to see it?
Right.
So you want the planner in here?
I'd like him to do it now, it doesn't have to be, I mean, writing would be nice, if he can come in and explain it, that'd be good, but, you know, it's almost impossible, unless you want to really dig into the zoning code-
Right.
On how this thing plays. So what is, what's it supposed to do?
And what's it going to look like?
What's it going to look like?
Right.
Yes, because it's, this is specific parcels, and it's also overlay.
Right.
It's a big part, I mean, it's a big swath of the town, and it's very different than what we consciously chose to do a couple of years ago, when we limited ground-mounted solar to an accessory used to a single-family home. This is, this is broad-scale, big-
And the neighborhood in the, in the town, half the town should be aware of what's going to take place.
Clearcutting, forest clearcutting, the whole bit. So what's allowed, so, because we can't, we have to put it on, but I don't have to support it.
That's right.
So I'd like to know what, what it does before being asked to support it.
I see a lot of issues with it myself as well.
Yeah, everybody's going to have issues.
A lot of language that I don't particularly care for.
I would like to see if possible, that, you know, if it's a map of the town-
Of what it's going to look like.
I want to see the parcels that included in this overlay district.
And the neighborhood.
I'm big on the visual, it makes it easy.
There, there was one thing I also had, um, Andrew brought it up with, well, I think so. On page seven, uh, the warrant article that was submitted by Natural Resources, um, vote to appropriate, to transfer the sum of the $14,000 for revenue available for appropriation to the, uh, Natural Resources Waterways Expense Account, um, to do the study on the Santuit Pond in the, in a warmer, in wetter climate, um, the algae blooms. She references that ACOM report, and, you know, I think that's the same report that we found was done on the back end of a drought, and so the information is skewed, based on Brian's presentation, you know, you can't attribute that much nitrogen to the natural occurrences. So I think the report, if you're going to do, um, a study, I don't know that using a, a, a report that is questionable, the information and the data, if that's the best route. So, um, my concern is, you know, I, I don't know if $14,000 is enough, um, to kind of filter out the, the, the information, and try to extrapolate it, and, and, so it's more useful and accurate.
Okay, well, we're just starting to dig into it.
On that one specifically, it, it talks about grants and matching funds, so, there's, there's a lot more to it, though, I don't think, I don't, I know I don't understand it.
So, just that I'm clear, um, as far as the ARPA funds, uh, because I know that some staff was going to be taking a look at, uh, the possibilities, so, if I understand the board correctly, the direction is, whatever the amount is, is to be used for wastewater. Is that correct?
Well, I think that's something we have to-
Yeah, I think we, I mean, that's-
We have to-
We have to look at, understand what, how much money is there, and what the competing, you know, what are the competing demands that you might have as our fiscal manager, and then weigh the conversation. I think what you've heard is some general-
That's the priority.
General knee-jerk reaction, that that's where we'd like to funnel this money, if we can do it.
Okay.
But, you know, I want to give you a chance to make your case for other things you're hearing, before we ignore it.
Okay. Very good.
Everybody good? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, good night, everybody.